The Planning Commission meeting to order. The chairman's on his way, but we'll go ahead and get started because everyone's time is valuable, especially on a Friday. Welcome, everyone. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of January 21st through 14. Everybody had a chance to look at those?
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes of January 21st.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Second item in business is application CU 13-4 filed by DMA Architects on behalf of the Montessori School requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow construction of a group daycare center slash preschool in an R2 multifamily residential zoning district on property legally described as Lot 1 in the east 35 foot of Lot 2, Block 9 of the Meyer addition of the city of Salinas, Saline County, Kansas, and addressed as 1312 McAdams. Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was a conditional use permit application that was filed by DMA Architects on behalf of Roger Madison and the Salina Montessori School. That was filed at the end of 2013. That application was scheduled for a January 7th, 2014 public hearing. The notice of that hearing was published and mailed, and the Planning Commission reviewed a report. You heard testimony and took action on the conditional use permit on January 7th. Following that meeting, staff determined that four individual owners of the townhomes that make up the Pepper Tree Estates townhomes did not receive individualized notice in advance of that meeting. The notice, we determined, was sent to the homeowners association at an address that is no longer current. And because that disallowed them their opportunity to have advanced notice and an opportunity to be heard, the Planning Commission voted at your last meeting to reconsider that action to schedule and hold a new public hearing today where the individual owners and residents of Pepper Tree Estates would have an opportunity to hear, to appear here and provide their comments on the application. You also have in your packet a letter signed by the owners of the townhomes in the Pepper Tree Estates area. So just to briefly summarize, we are at the corner of McAdams and Faith Drive, the southwest corner. We are on property that's owned by Roger Madison, will continue to be owned by Roger Madison. And the Montessori School, as you're familiar, is currently located at the Christ Cathedral Church Building on South 8th. They have an arrangement with Mr. Madison whereby they would like to construct a new freestanding preschool facility on this property and to have their own space. And so the architects and representative of the school indicate the facility would have two classrooms and three faculty members. The preschool would have up to 24 students per session with a morning and afternoon session. Classrooms would have an indoor play area. The building would not have a basement. And the applicant's architect had indicated that bathrooms would be sized and designed to serve as above-ground safe rooms. We provided with you on pages 3 and 4 that preschools are regulated by the state of Kansas, Kansas Department of Health and Environment. And you also have a role to undergo the review of this application. And the reason for this is that due to unique site or neighborhood conditions, a preschool operation with a large number of children could have an impact on adjacent property owners or an entire neighborhood. And so the purpose of today's hearing is to allow adjacent property owners to comment and ask questions about the application. So John has given you kind of an overview up there. He is now on the floor plan. John, if you could go to 6. These are the building elevations that were in your packet. So north elevation meaning what you would see if you were on McAdams. The east elevation is what you would see if you were over at Oxbow Park. And the west elevation would be towards the duplex and townhome to the west. If you go back to the site plan, John. The site plan has been enhanced to provide a little more detail. You might have to blow that up slightly, John. But it is showing some of the garden boxes that were discussed landscaping in this area. They're proposing a fence along this property line, and I believe a fence also along the south property line. And then, John, do you have the color elevation, the rendering? So this is a rendering of if you were standing at the corner looking towards the southwest. This is what you would see with the drop-off area and main entrance here. So this would face out towards the McAdams and Faith Drive intersection. And as we pointed out, preschools, along with other uses such as schools and nursing homes and churches, are uses that are allowed within residential areas on a case-by-case, location-by-location basis. And so I think the only two items of new information is that just yesterday we got a letter from FEMA that officially removed this property from the 100-year floodplain. So there will not be any floodplain limitations as far as minimum elevations or not having a basement. But this is property that's within 500 feet of the city's flood control levee, and that does create some challenges and additional costs to constructing basements in proximity to the levee area. The other thing we did was a little more research on the planning side where there had been some planning studies of trip generation for what is generated from preschool operations. And there's quite a bit of variation, but there were three ways that those trips were measured by employee, by student, and by thousand square feet of area. And so using those numbers, we came up with an estimate that placing the preschool here as proposed could generate anywhere from 17 to 58 additional vehicle trips per day. I will call on Mr. Stack who has some additional information for you about Faith Drive.
Just traffic counts and speeds, is that something to talk about, Dean?
Yes. We wanted to point out that Faith Drive is classified as a residential street but appears to have higher traffic counts than a lot of our other residential streets. And maybe if you had some thoughts about the ability to have any sort of school zone or designated crosswalk at the intersection, what the criteria for those would be, Dan?
Well, the traffic counts we took were in 2011 in November. And remember, that was a request that we had, so we just took some counts in there. About 800 cars a day. It's a fairly high count for a residential street, but it does serve as a kind of a feeder for the park and for all the whole, most of the community there that's west of the river. There's no other way to get to those houses other than McAdams or Republic. Faith seems to be one that people use a lot. So quite a few cars, however, the speed of them was normal, actually lower than 30 mile an hour speed limit. So majority of the cars are going, 85th percentile is 26 miles an hour, so not overly fast. At least, it's not, they're not a lot of speeders. We didn't even have any over 30, 36 was the highest we counted. So usually when you do a count, you'll find somebody that is going really fast, but in this case, there wasn't anybody that we could find that was going extremely fast. Crosswalks typically 20 in an hour. 20 people who are going to cross the street in an hour has been a criteria that we've utilized recently, I guess, on, depends on the street, the ADT, and then do you have a lot of people who are going to cross in a certain time. 20 people over a day is just different than an hour, so that's one of the factors that we use. Any other questions, Dean?
Any commissioners have any questions about, for Dan, about our traffic counts or the situation there?
Were those counts taken this week, or when were those counts taken?
November of 2011.
November, okay.
And they were taken around, near Oxbow Park, to the north of this property a little ways, kind of near the curve.
Any other questions for staff?
We did want to just point out to you on page 9, we have done our best to work through the criteria that you are supposed to consider in the case of a conditional use permit. And those are a summary of staff's suggested findings. Those findings would support approval of this application, and we have recommended seven conditions of approval, one of which would include having a site drainage analysis for this property because it is within a critical drainage area. And your options today would be to approve a conditional use permit to allow preschool facility in this location. If you were in agreement with the findings on page 9, you could approve a conditional use permit subject to specified conditions. We've outlined seven in the report, or any revisions you have that you think need to be made to the plan to make it more acceptable for the neighborhood. You could postpone consideration of the application if you think you need additional information to reach a decision, or you could deny the application if the required findings cannot be made, or if the commission believes the proposed use would be incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood. So where we would be with that is that staff has made findings that would be in support of the application. If you are in disagreement, or a majority of you do not agree with those findings, then we would have access to the city attorney to assist you with developing alternative findings. But our recommendation, based on our review, was to approve the request and the plan that was submitted, subject to the seven conditions that we've outlined on pages 10 and 11 of your report. So with that, we'd be open to any questions that you have about the, either the drawings that you've seen, or any of the report that staff has provided.
Dean, in the previous conversations we had, there was discussion about bathrooms being used for storm shelters. Is there, is that part of the, do we need to discuss that as an alternative to be thrown in to make sure that there's enough room for 24 children and three employees?
That...
And that it's done structurally sound?
That could be added as a condition, or in the presentation either from the architect or the Montessori School, you could get some additional. I think the question was if you used above-ground restrooms as safe rooms, could you safely accommodate all the occupants of the building into that above-ground restroom? So I think that might be a question for the architect or representatives of the school.
Dean, when the item was heard before, I believe I missed that meeting, what was the commission's vote?
The vote was to approve the request. There were five members who were present and voting, and the vote was to approve it subject to the conditions that were outlined there on pages 10 and 11. But we did not have a full representation of the neighbors within 200 feet at that meeting.
I understand.
Any other questions of staff? If not at this time, we'll hear from either the applicant and/or the owner of record who want to come up and speak to the commission.
I'm Donnie Mars, 2035 East Iron, representing DMA Architects and the applicants. Chairman and commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to come back today and present this worthy project again before you. I think Dean has made a good summary of the contents of what you've heard. I might add a comment concerning the safe room. FEMA has guidelines for safe rooms, above-ground safe rooms, and how you occupy those, and we will comply with FEMA regulations for those safe rooms. That's the standard that's used in the industry, and so we will follow that. I would defer any other comments to later in the meeting if so necessary. Any questions that you might have for me?
Are you comfortable with all the staff recommendations?
Yes.
Don, there was one question that came up at the previous hearing about, the question came up, this is going to continue to be owned by Mr. Madison, and if for some reason in the future the preschool didn't continue to operate here. There was some discussion about the adaptability of this building for other uses or residential uses. Is anything special being taken into account in the original design in terms of adaptability?
The design was done such, so that it would have a very residential flavor to its exterior appearance. Scale-wise, it fits into the residential area as well. The entrance that we have in the center, if this were converted into a duplex, you would have a common entrance that would come into two units that would be one in each side of the unit itself. We have located all of the plumbing improvements right in the center of the structure, not only to help us in this whole safe room issue, but also to allow that area to be remodeled then for kitchen, bathroom space for the two duplexes. So it would accommodate that very well. And I think the appearance of the structure on the site adds its character to the neighborhood.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
I would remind, before we open up for a public hearing, I'm sure we have people on both sides, would limit to your conversations or comments to five minutes for the commissioners there. We will allow time for rebuttal if you have some questions from the applicant, as well as yourself. If you want to come back again for a second time, we'd probably limit that to about three minutes, again, so everybody can feel like they've been heard for any rebuttal that's there. And then if you want to, once we close the public hearing, the commissioners may have additional questions for you at that time. But once the public hearing is closed, it will be closed for discussion for the commissioners. Any, be good with that? All right. Anybody at open public hearing, anybody have any concerns about this application? Please step forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Carol Ginther, and I'm president of the Pepper Tree Estates. And I have some comments I want made. The first is, the traffic will be terrible on that McAdams Street. Even today, when there's nobody around, the street was hardly passable. And when you put, oh, 40 kids, I don't know how, it's never said in the deal how the kids are going to get there, so I suppose their parents, they're all going to bring them there. So then you're going to have a terrible amount of cars there in the morning and then in the afternoon. So you ought to take that into effect. And then the other thing I got is, they said before, and I didn't hear it here now, that you could, Mr. Masterson could put two buildings in there and rent them out. Well, I thought your thing here was just for one thing, not to give him a long, long doing thing. And then I had the street parking, and you have answered that. And the other thing is, is the business use of Oxford Park. Since when, that's a public park over there, and it's used considerable by young girls and their kids and stuff. And if you take 17 kids over there twice, how are they going to get to use it? There's only, I think we counted, five pieces of equipment over there. There's not very much. And what you're going to do is cut those people out, and that's a public park, has been since it was built. And then you changed the fence from 15 feet to 6 feet, and I understand that schools are supposed to be enclosed.
Are you talking about in height?
Yeah. You got it down to six foot, and I think you're, it's supposed to be 15 foot for school, and you lowered it to six.
The discussion at the previous meeting was that we pointed out, and it's in your report, that this is a use that would require a 15-foot landscape buffer on the west side. And one of the architects that was representing the school talked about wanting to talk with staff about putting up a six-foot privacy fence in lieu of the 15-foot landscape buffer. But the plan that you have on display here has both. It has the 15-foot landscape buffer here, and it also proposes a fence. But the purpose of the 15 feet is just to have a separation between this building and the residential property line, and they have provided that 15-foot separation here. The discussion was, instead of having any landscaping or buffering here, just simply have a fence instead. But that's not the plan that's before you today, that we have a landscape buffer here, and then they're also proposing the fence. So there's nothing that would preclude them from having the fence, but the buffer there is to be a shade buffer, also a sound buffer, and just an aesthetic buffer so that there's a cushion between the proposed preschool and the residence directly to the west. And that is what is proposed on the plan. John, do you want to go back to the letter?
Yeah. You guys said that these school would increase value of our property, and we sorely disagree with that. You put a school in out there, and all those kids around, our property will drop in value, considerable probably. That Pepper Tree Estates been there for 25 years, and me and my wife have been there for 23, and we got two new guys that's only been there two or three years, and that's the reason they bought the place, because it was nice and quiet and no big rudder to traffic. And now we'll be right like in the center of town. So if you have any questions, I'll...
Staff did want to have an opportunity to, John, if you could scroll back up to the first two items there. I think where maybe there's a difference in perception between the way staff was looking at this and the way it's referred to in the letter, the way that the zoning ordinance looks at it, the Montessori preschool is not a business. It's a use that is a secondary support-type use that you would see in residential districts. I would point out that the Martin Luther King Childcare Center on North Santa Fe, it is a larger-scale preschool, and it is located in a residential district, and it is located there under a conditional use permit approved by the Planning Commission. But there's, the expectation is that in a residential neighborhood, that schools, churches, parks, preschools, daycare centers will be incorporated into the residential area. So I wanted to make clear, this property is zoned R2 multifamily, and it's going to continue to be zoned R2 multifamily. And the fact that this building is placed here in this configuration design would not allow it to be used for any business purpose in the future. So we're not, we're not changing the residential zoning. That is remaining in place. And what this action would do would be to grant them a permit to construct that particular building as a preschool in this location. And so the letter of concern refers to it as, as a business or perhaps opening up the zoning for business, but wanted to assure everyone that the R2 zoning is going to remain in place. And that is why we asked the question about the adaptability of the building, should it not be a preschool in the future. The only legal use it could be put to would be as a two-unit dwelling. And so if, as you look at this neighborhood, we have fourplexes, we have sixplexes, we have duplexes, we have townhomes, we have a church, we have a park. And so your role is primarily to look at the size and location of the site and the particular design of the building to see if you think it fits in with its surroundings. But we are not changing the zoning to introduce a business. We're just looking to see if this plan for this preschool, if you think this is a suitable location and a suitable plan. But we are, we are not, it's not going to open the door to turn this into a business site.
Any other questions for Mr. Carroll?
Mr. Ginther, did Mr. Stack's comments about Faith Drive, did that help you at all in terms of the traffic counts and the current speeds?
That sounds about right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ginther. Any others who would like to express their opinion in the public hearing on this item?
I'm David Hawsworth, 2315 River Trail Road. I'm the chair of the board of the Montessori School. And just to clarify a couple of things, we talked about the business aspect of it. I just want to make it clear that the Salina Montessori School is a nonprofit corporation, you know, 501(c)(3) corporation. As far as the traffic, we did conduct a bit of an informal traffic study at our present location, and the bulk of the traffic happens during the pickup times, as you can imagine. But most of the traffic was in and out of there in 10 to 15 minutes. So in my opinion, I don't think that would cause an undue hardship on the neighborhood, even though the traffic counts would be, would go up at that particular time. As for the use of the park, Sherry, I don't think they're ever out more than, what, 15, 20 minutes at a time? And, you know, they certainly wouldn't have exclusive use of the park at that point. Anybody can use the park at the same time, so. So I just wanted to make those points. Any questions?
David, just for my notes and for the record, about when would those heavy traffic times drop off, pickup times be?
The morning pickups are, what, about 11:30? Morning pickup is around 11:30, and the afternoon pickup is 3:00 p.m.
Okay.
I have a question that may require Mr. Marsh to come up as much as anything else, and it comes from the homeowners' list of questions. It talks... We've talked about what's going to happen if this business fails. I don't like to sit here and plan for failure. So the question that was brought up, though, is what happens if this business decides to expand? And is there space on that lot to do any expansions, or is it full? And that may be a staff, that may be a Marsh question.
Well, I can speak from the staff perspective that this... Let's just say it is a well-fit building in sight, but it's a snug-fit building in sight. It's a thirty-six-hundred-square-foot building, and because it is not a residence, we do require the fifteen-foot buffer on the south. And so basically, he... Mr. Marsh has the building situated about as close to McAdams, as close to Faith as it can be, as close to the south property line, and as close to the west property line as it could be. So there is no room for this building to be added on to at this location. I guess Mr. Hawsworth could speak to it. Will this facility accommodate more students than what you currently have at the Christ Cathedral location?
Oh, yes, definitely. One of the reasons we designed it with two classrooms is to anticipate future expansion. The... Each classroom can handle a maximum of twenty-four kids. So if we had theoretically two classes in the morning and two classes in the afternoon, that would be ninety-six total students. We don't anticipate being there in the near future, but with the square footage we have in the proposed building, that would be the max that we could accommodate.
Thank you.
Yes, we were looking at this as representing an expansion of the space that they currently have at Christ Cathedral's.
Yeah, we only have one classroom currently, so we can only handle twenty-four in the morning and twenty-four in the afternoon, and we're at full enrollment right now.
Any other questions? Sorry, I was just thinking.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Name and address, please, for the record.
Lola Ginther, I'm his wife. We live on thirteen oh three Meyer. And I think your traffic count on Faith is not correct, because I face these windows when I'm in the kitchen and in the dining room, and there is a lot of traffic on Faith, and there's a lot of speeding, there's races. In fact, a week ago Saturday night, again, someone entered at the corner of McAdams and Faith and drove through the church lot and came out on our driveway again. And this has happened several times with guys playing whatever they play in their vehicles. And so there is speeding, which I don't think can be contained that well. And the park is a real hangout for young people, especially in the summer after dark. They've had vandalism in the restroom several times. They've brought guys out of the trees, the cops have, and I don't know what was being conducted over there, but... So I think they should consider that, too. That's not a good environment for children. So and in the summertime, there's girls and guys in the parking lot, and they go over and skinny-dip in the river and come back in their bathing suits and so forth. So I don't know if your childcare goes all day in the summer, too, or not. But that's a few of my feelings. And I wondered, how many children in that area will attend that school? I understand that the enrollment is very expensive. So can anybody answer that?
Maybe somebody can come back on there and they can answer that from there.
I was wondering why they picked that area, because there's low-income housing right across the street, which I think is a bad location for... To put this school, and then we have low-income children across the street. And I've talked to several ladies that own on Faith Drive in those duplexes that weren't notified because they were out of the two-hundred-foot area, and they sure didn't agree to it. They couldn't come today because they had other plans. But they own their duplexes, they walk their dogs, and so forth. And there's no sidewalks. In the summer, I walk a lot, and so does my neighbor lady. There's no sidewalks on McAdams, and Faith is the only... Only has a sidewalk on the east. So McAdams is really risky, because you have all these vehicles parked in apartments and so forth, so you're going in and out. People are trying to take their children, and young children are trying to go to the park, and it's very risky. So more traffic, I think, is very bad. But I do think you need to take a new traffic count on Faith Drive. That's all I have.
Thank you. David, did you want to respond to that question?
Just on the attendance thing, the school's open to everybody. You know, we don't say any particular person is excluded from attending the school. So, you know, anyone who can pay the tuition or, you know, we always can talk about scholarship opportunities, but, you know, and we don't turn anybody away from the school just based on, you know, location or anything like that.
I have another quick question. Mrs. Ginther, your only specific comment about traffic violations was late Saturday night. So what hours and what days will you actually operate?
The school would be in session on Monday through Thursday from eight in the morning till about three in the afternoon. And, you know, we follow the USD 305 school calendar, except that we start the day after Labor Day.
So you're not even in session in the summer?
Yeah, from mid-May until Labor Day, we're out of session.
Okay, because the only time I've seen high usage at that park was soccer or rugby, and that's when the street would get lined with cars. And that's, of course, always been in the summer and usually on weekends for the biggest ones. So if you're not open Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, you've eliminated a whole lot of potential conflict to use on the park. As a park taxpayer, I'm always troubled by the fact that it seems to me that a lot of our parks are underutilized, so the more people use them in midday business hours, the better, as far as I'm concerned.
One last question. I just want to make sure I heard you correct on there. At full capacity, let's fast forward three years down the road, at full capacity, you're saying you would run twenty-four students per classroom with two classrooms? That's fifty students per day in each session? That's a hundred kids a day?
Well, forty-eight, since there'd only be twenty-four in each classroom.
Okay, I'm doing easy math.
Ninety-six.
That's right. I didn't get to go to the Montessori school, so I gotta... As close as I can get here, okay? So I'm doing a... I just want to make sure you're correct on that. So that's a hundred car doors slamming, ninety-six, thank you, slamming in... I mean, I guess my original thought on this, and we can... I can discuss on there, just... I just want to make real clear on there, because I was thinking when we... When I approved this the first time, and when I... My thought process was there were, you know, there were twenty-four kids, kind of a small unit that was there. We talked more about if it didn't work, we could put them into duplexes, and you guys were thinking about that. And then we have Mr. Carroll say, well, what if it gets even bigger that's there? And then I guess my first thought is, I didn't realize you're going to be running two classrooms at four shifts, if that's, you know...
Well, we're not there yet.
I understand, but I'm saying, I'm giving you the benefit of the doubt, fast forward three years, is that's, you know, to me, I'm sitting there going, okay, twenty-four students originally, now to ninety-six students, that's quite a bit of traffic on that particular one. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, that this could allow ninety-six students and/or my next question's going to be to staff. If we're looking at this on approving a conditional use permit, can we limit then to how many students that they would be able to enroll?
Yes. I mean, as long as there was some... You had some basis for doing it. We already limit... If somebody wants to do a preschool in their home in a residential area, we already limit that. Our approach to preschools that are located in what we would consider non-residential buildings would be based on the capacity that the facility would have. So we have some preschools like the Martin Luther King, and some others that are in non-residential settings, and their number of students would be based on the capacity that that preschool has. So if you have a preschool that is located in a church building, they're more likely to have the twenty-four or more students per session, whereas if you're in a home, you'd be limited to twelve. But the... I'm assuming the twenty-four number is just based on the square footage that they have available and what the state rules are for that. But if you felt that that was too high, then you could select through conditions, you could select a maximum number of students per session.
I'm just speaking for myself. I think at twenty-four, I was okay. At ninety-six, I start to think, is this a commercial business? I mean, or a commercial traffic, I guess, that's on there, and that's just throwing that out there, so if you guys have any things for that.
It's not ninety-six kids all at any one moment in time. And the unintended consequence of limiting one particular preschool to whatever we think is a good number, we need to stop and think, if we don't utilize the square footage as a way to determine that, we may end up having not one, but two, but several preschools who also, for whatever reason... Square footage is... It levels the playing field. If you've got a basement in a church across the street from a bunch of residents, square footage limits the number of students. The square footage of this building limits the number of students. It keeps the playing field real even. I agree. Forty-eight kids at any one session sounds like a lot, but I don't know the alternative personally.
And since people seem to be concerned about the traffic, if you had the absolute worst case, ninety-six kids, each one with a private chauffeur, two trips a day, that gets you up to one-hundred-and-ninety-two. You have five employees, two trips a day, that gets you up to two-hundred-and-two trips a day. So the question is for Mr. Stack, we have to wake Mr. Stack back to the meeting, bring him back to the meeting. If it's... If there's eight-hundred on those streets, what is the realistic capacity of those two streets, Faith and McAdams? Two-hundred cars a day make a difference if you could generate that many actual trips?
No, I mean, McAdams, Republic, Faith, they all can carry eight to a thousand cars a day as necessary. So typically, when that happens, people just find the route they like, and they don't use... Not everyone uses the same street, so it's not a... The street gets the... All the cars, so, yeah, we don't have... We don't see any reason to believe that those streets couldn't handle that traffic.
Okay, thank you.
How many cars can they unload at a time, the driveway capacity and unloading capacity?
I'm Sherry Crable, eight-eighty-one Eastridge Drive, Director of the Montessori School, and I kind of wanted to explain how the pickup and drop-off work. It's very efficient. The parents drop the children off in the morning, and they come in quickly. When they pick them up, we, the facilitators, load the children up. So they drive through, we put them in the car, and they go out, and it happens very quickly. So it's not a problem. It hasn't been a problem, and we're in a high-traffic area right now. So it works smoothly. And as far as going to two classrooms, why I wanted two classrooms was so we would have a multipurpose area for indoor playtime for one side, and the other side would be the classroom. Montessori-trained individuals are very difficult to find in a town the size of Salina, and there usually aren't Montessori schools in a town this size. I don't see us finding another Montessori-trained person to take another classroom in the near future. And by the time we might find someone, I'm probably going to be too old to do it. Thank you.
So Sherry, before you sit down, in case you want to respond to this, if I understand you correctly, then such an expansion to two full classrooms would cut back some of your present vision for the use of those rooms and would be far enough off that we're just talking about long-time, future plans, not necessarily very immediate? Okay.
Hi, I'm Amy Cole, one oh five Overhill. I'm a parent of a student in Montessori and had a parent... Had a child last year as well, and wanted to speak a little bit to the carpooling. I'm a working parent, and we carpool and rely on carpools very heavily. So while it's anecdotal information, and I don't have a lot of statistics for you, I am one of many of... Many of those twenty-four kids that carpool, so you're not going to see twenty-four cars. You'll never see twenty-four cars. I don't know that that's ever happened before.
Anybody else for the public hearing?
I might just, while Roger's coming to the podium, Mrs. Ginther, if I understand, your first comment, it was that cars going fast on those roads cut right across that now vacant lot. I got that right? Yeah. Right. I just want to remark somewhat rightly that having a building there would be a marked disincentive from such traffic variations in the future.
I'm Roger Madison, four eighty-five Upper Mill Heights. I'm the owner of the lot. I just feel like, these are a lot of concerns I had when they confronted me four months ago. I've spent quite a bit of time just slowing down and watching their facility on Ninth Street and seeing the activity there, and I never see any activity. And like I said, these are concerns I had, so I'm aware of how they feel. I've owned property in that area for twenty years, and so I don't want my values to go down. I feel this is just a very good additional use for this area, and I think as it goes on, they will feel so also, I hope, so.
You just don't want to mow the yard anymore, do you, Roger?
I did see, when she mentioned somebody cut across from... She said from Faith to Meyer. I was trying to figure out why somebody jumped on Meyer Street and cut across to Faith, so... I thought, don't...
Any other comments? If not, last chance, we'll close the public hearing. All right, we'll close the public hearing, bring you back to the Commission for Action and/or additional questions.
I just have one question, and then I'm going to make a motion. Or not question, a comment, I should say, as much as anything else. I get concerned when we always talk about property values going up and down. That's probably the hardest thing for anybody on either side of the issue to prove. But I do have to say that I firmly believe in the value of young children in a community. I've taken kindergarten students to nursing facilities. I've taken third graders to sing at various places where people now my age live, and there's a magic that happens when that occurs. Now, I don't know that it has anything to do with the value of the property, but I think it has something to do with the value of the life of the people that are involved in that, both the young and those of us who aren't so young. So I, you know, I really am excited about infusing young children into areas where they can interact with mature people. I think that's an important part of their growth. Having said that, unless there's somebody who will... If you don't want to do it, you can not second it. I'd like to move that we approve application CU thirteen dash four with the... What do I want to say? With the staff recommendations as outlined of one through seven on pages nine or ten and eleven.
And you are in agreement with the findings that were suggested there on page nine?
Yes.
Yes. I'll second the motion.
I just wanted to clarify that condition number seven there is there to basically say, what you see presented to you is what you get. And the plan presented was for those two classrooms with a capacity of 24 students per classroom. And so, that is, unless there's something to the contrary, that would be the limitation that would be placed on this under condition number seven.
I have a motion and a second before we take that. Any discussion or comments from any other commissioners? I guess before I call, vote on there, I too am kind of stuck on this. We have to make tough decisions that are on there. I do sympathize, and I will tell you what the way I vote on there. I would say that I would love to have seen a motion with about 60 kids maximum. The 96 kids or whatever still, to me, seems like a lot going through there. And had there been more single-family residents in that area, I probably would have voted against the motion, given the fact that they're not discrediting anything with that. But, given that location on that corner with the housing that's down the street, the fourplexes across the street, and the multifamily area, had it been a single-family area, my vote would be completely different. Because, but I think this fits in. I think that the applicant has done a great job designing it for this area. To me, it looks like it fits the other structures that are there. And I believe that they've done some forward thinking in that if it doesn't work out, they can utilize this building at a later date. But, I just felt like I wanted to share that with you on there, that I did hear your concerns, and I really wanted to make sure that this is going to work. And again, it's just one man's opinion, but I did hear what you're saying. I do feel like this will be a win-win that's on there. So, with that being said, any other comments? If not, I haven't.
I think maybe we have one. John, do you want to go?
I just, I feel that the hours of operation restricted to, you know, the time that it's going to be running, doesn't feel like it's going to hamper the neighborhood. If it was running on Fridays and Saturdays when you had teenagers running in the streets and with little kids, I'd be concerned. But, otherwise, the hours that they're operating, it seems like a good choice.
And I want to just mention, while we're weighing in just on the issues, I too am sympathetic to the concerns that Pepper Tree Homes residents have. I do think that however tangential this possibility might be, Ms. Ginter mentioned a higher economic status student attending the school versus perhaps a lower economic status in the neighborhood. And if true, one of the reasons that I would vote for it and am voting for it for a variety of reasons is that we want to promote that kind of intersection, if it's true, and we don't know that it's true. You know, we'd like to have more of a mix of the population. And I kind of like the idea of getting different peoples in the same spirit as previous comments.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign of pose. Motion passes. We're on public hearing item number three, application CU-14-1 filed by Diana Erickson, owner of Soggy Dog Salon, request approval of conditional use permit. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hirsch will be presenting this item, but I'm just going to give you a little bit of background that last year, we had a meeting with Ms. Erickson, and we told her that based on our information, the ordinance we had, that dog kennels did not appear as a permitted or conditional use in the C4 downtown district. And she then submitted a text amendment application to add that to the list of conditional uses. That did result in a public hearing before the Planning Commission, discussion by the City Commission. Then, upon further discussion and research, the City Commission, it was determined that it actually was intended originally in 2008 to have been listed. And due to a drafting error on second reading, it inadvertently got dropped. So, the City Commission reinserted that in September of 2013 as a use that could be applied for in the C4 district. And it was that action that gave Ms. Erickson standing to come before you today and file an application. So, I'll let Mr. Hirsch present that overview for you, as well as his voice will last.
You know, bear with me. My voice is hanging in there. John, if we could look at the floor plan, let's try either six or seven, slide six or seven there. This floor plan represents the Wood Fashion Plaza property. We have the canopy area here, which is under roofed, but is not inside the building. We've got the tenant space that has historically been a restaurant. And then, we've got the applicant's current tenant space, which is a dog grooming salon-type business. The initial application for the conditional use permit was to expand, for the applicant to expand into this 205 West Ash tenant space and do dog boarding. Now, since the packet and staff report went out last week, the applicant has expressed interest in potentially expanding also, not only into the 205 West Ash tenant space, but also the 207 West Ash tenant space. And, yeah, both of these shown here by Mr. Berger on the screen. Staff doesn't know a whole lot about the 207 tenant space, but the applicant will explain it. What staff does know is that the applicant is most interested in this space to have a larger play area for the dogs that are in boarding, so that they can get exercise without necessarily having to go for walks, particularly when there's inclement weather and things like that, so that there would be a larger indoor playing area in the facility. So, that's what we're dealing with here. Here is the site plan for the 205 West Ash facility. And these doors, or these symbols here signify doors and kenneling spaces. They would be areas in which the dogs could stay. There are different sizes, with the larger ones being on the, this would be the east side, and this would be the west side of this hallway here. So, that's the nature of the applicant's request. The zoning of the property is C4, which is our central downtown business district. And the requirements in the C4 district are very loose in terms of setbacks. There are no setback requirements. And so, you often see buildings that are constructed to the property lines, as is the case with our subject property. The subject property does have 100% lot coverage, which is typical in the C4 district. And as such, the proposed operations would adhere to the C4 district regulations. Now, the other regulations that we have to look at, in addition to our zoning regulations, are the state of Kansas does regulate boarding facilities. And we've attached a couple of documents in your packet that explain what those rules or those regulations are. And the applicant would be required to meet those regulations. And we won't go into detail, but on the screen here is the Kansas laws applicable to kennel operations. So, you can see what those look like. And there is licensing involved with that through the state. When looking at this conditional use permit application, the Planning Commission must find that the conditional use in the proposed location will contribute to the welfare and convenience of the public. The applicant believes that the added dog boarding would add a valued service and address a growing need within the city of Salina. The applicant also states that they've planned extensively to ensure that their business expansion does not cause a hindrance or nuisance to the residents and other businesses within the Lee District area. And staff would agree that pet services are a valued business and asset to a community. The question is whether or not the Planning Commission believes that permitting and dog kenneling in this particular area would contribute and add to the welfare of the Lee District. The impacts and injury of the surrounding property, the commission must find that this property or that the proposed conditional use permit will not cause substantial injury to the value or other properties in the neighborhood. And dog kennels, they're conditional uses because they are unique. And by that, we've identified four distinct variables that could be perceived as detrimental to the neighborhood. And they would be excessive noise, because the C4 district has a development pattern that has common walls a lot of times between either tenant spaces or even properties, with the buildings going to the property line and zero setbacks. Having excessive noise could interrupt the enjoyment of neighboring properties. Likewise, odor, when you have such a density of development and the proximity of neighbors is so close, offensive odor could also affect the enjoyment of shoppers and workers and people living in the area. And transportation, the C4 district is designed to have a more dense level of population. And as such, doesn't have a lot of off-street parking, particularly private off-street parking. Most of the parking that you find in the downtown area is either on public streets or in public parking lots. And that can be problematic potentially, depending on where the proposed conditional use boarding kennel is proposed. And then, lastly, we have doggie business. Because there is limited green space in the downtown area, and most of the infrastructure is either paved with parking lots, roads, sidewalks, or buildings, there's a limited area for dogs to do their business. And so, that would be a concern. We don't want to leave messes around the downtown area. So, what the applicant has done is she is taking each of these four concerns that the commission and staff have expressed in previous meetings and gone through them one by one to outline how she would address these issues. For excessive noise, the applicant states that they have been proactive since entering business on this property in 2007. What they've done is they've, when they did their renovation, they included materials that soundproofed the shared walls with their tenants, the other tenants. And what they're proposing in this particular expansion would be to do the same thing with using materials that would buffer sound on common walls. And in addition to that, they would use these vet, let's see what they're called, vet baffles, which are two-by-four panels that can be hung from the ceiling. And they're designed to absorb and retain sound, so that they muffle a lot of the echoing and the loudness of a barking dog. In addition to using new advanced materials to buffer that sound and limit the sound, they also, the applicant also plans on using, limiting barking scenarios, using different techniques with their layout. For instance, they are going to limit the interaction of dogs within the boarding area. And what that means is the dogs won't be facing each other, so they can see each other, because that has a tendency to get them excited and worked up, which can cause unnecessary noise. The applicant also is proposing to use music to help create a more calming environment. The applicant's business, Soggy Dog Salon, also offers exercise through daily walks. And they also have mind-stimulating toys, which can help keep dogs in a more calm, quieter state of mind. The applicant states that her business strives to be a good business neighbor in the Lee District. And in going through the applicant's application, staff would agree that the applicant has provided convincing solutions to limit and buffer excessive noise for boarded dogs. In dealing with offensive odor, the applicant states that the most successful way to control odor is to just pick it up and remove it. And that's, that's very successful, especially on the outside. The applicant says that there are supplemental products that are also available. And the applicant says that she has met with a couple of companies that specialize in odor and sanitation control and high-traffic animal shelter institutions. Staff would agree that one obvious way to limit odor is to remove the odor immediately, and then it doesn't become an issue. Staff would like to see plans on how the specialization companies would, or the applicant would address the potential odor within the building areas that was a little bit unclear in the application. In dealing with transportation and access, even though this particular property is 100% developed with the roofing covering the entire site, there is a notched-out canopy area that is used for a drive-through that connects Ash to Seventh Street. There's a picture of it there that Mr. Berger has. And this is what majority of all of the customers of the Soggy Dog Salon currently use. What will happen is people will pull up off of either Ash Street or Seventh Park. They'll unload their pets, take them inside, hand them off, and then come back into their car and drive off. And that seems to work really well. The applicant states that the type of business she has, there really isn't a need for parking or prolonged periods of visiting the site. And that having a drop-off loading and loading area seems to work the best with the business model. And with the boarding expansion that's being proposed, that would continue. That would be the best model of parking that she could see. There is also, to the south, if we want to go to the site plan or the aerial photo, rather, probably, John, this light gray area that you see on the aerial photo is actually a public parking lot that's owned by the city of Salina. And that's only 50 feet away. So, there is parking there available for employees or patrons who are going to spend more time than simply dropping off their pets. So, there is parking in very close proximity to address the transportation and access. One thing that, if you want to go to the picture of the canopy real quick, John, one thing that is of a potential conflict or concern from staff is the canopy area is also adjacent, not only to the Soggy Dog Salon tenant space, but also the tenant space that's historically been a restaurant, which these windows here are the restaurant's area with the entrance over here on Seventh Street. And the reason there's potential concern there is the last couple tenants have inquired about potential outdoor dining with the city of Salina underneath a canopy area. The reason that's a concern is this is the primary drop-off point and access point that most of the Soggy Dog Salon clients use through here. And we're concerned, the staff, if you were to add an outdoor dining area, that there would be conflict with having people dining outside and people dropping off their dogs. And so, that's something that we'd want to talk with the applicant about, what the future plans of the canopy are, and if this is solely going to be a drive-through drop-off area, or if there are any plans to potentially have outdoor dining in that area in the future. So, in looking at doggie business, the applicant states that all Soggy Dog Salon employees are trained to pick up after their grooming clients, and that practice will continue with the boarding business. The applicant also proposes to put up a mutt-mit station, which is a kiosk that houses sanitation gloves. So, you can go in there and pull out sanitation gloves if you're a person of the general public, or if you're a client and your dog happens to go to the restroom outside. You would then be able to easily clean up after that pet without much of an issue there. The applicant also plans to continue education with both their clients and the public at large about the dangers and environmental hazards of not picking up after pets. And that would be something that the applicant would continue to work on. And as far as indoor sanitation and dealing with doggie business, the applicant does have an indoor peapod that is complete with specific plumbing, flooring, and draining. So, they have an indoor facility that uses the sanitary sewer system that is in the facility to discharge that waste. And that's how they would continue to handle indoor waste with the dogs. And that's how they would continue to handle indoor waste with the dogs and the pets that would be both groomed and boarded at this facility. And staff feels that the combination of the functioning indoor bathroom, as well as the requirement that all employees pick up after the clients should really help to limit the outdoor waste that would be a result of having additional dog activities at this facility. So overall, staff believes that the proposed boarding kennel would supplement an existing successful pet grooming business in an existing downtown tenant space, which would diversify the business mix of the downtown and increase customer traffic in the downtown area. Additionally, staff believes that the conditions of approval could be drafted to ensure that the boarding kennel activities at this location remain compatible with the character and land use mix of the downtown. In looking at the public utility and services, this facility, this building has been developed for quite some time. It's an older building and does have utilities on-site that are adequate to meet what the applicant is wanting to do. So we don't need to have any modifications or changes or expansions of any utilities or services on the site. Traffic access and parking. We spoke a little bit about the parking and how the property is accessed with the drive-through aisle. I guess I would add that there is no parking on 8th Street, but there is some parking available on a parallel basis along 7th Street. So there is some parking in the streets nearby, as well as having the parking lots, the public parking lots to the south and to the east, and then the drive-through drop-off area. So staff has a list of alternative actions that the commission could entertain. We do have a list of conditions if the commission feels that there are no negative impacts by the proposed conditional use permit, and that it would be a positive attribute to the welfare of the public in the Lee District. So with that, I'll read through these nine recommendations that staff might have. And you could have these modified. You could delete them. You could add to them. These are just thoughts that staff had while analyzing the proposed conditional use permit. So number one, all animal boarding sleeping facilities shall be within the enclosed building. Number two, business hours shall be from 7:00 a.m. to no later than 9:00 p.m. on seven days a week. The business and its employees shall comply with all health and safety measures in accordance with KAR 924-1 Kennel Operators and KAR 924-2 Animal Health and Husbandry Standards. And the business shall also have evidence of such state of Kansas certification and license posted at a reasonable location inside the business. The tenant space and the surrounding public area shall be kept clean of all animal waste at all times. And the perceivable odor and noise shall not project beyond the walls of the tenant space. And the applicant shall provide construction plans detailing the proposed odor and sanitation control and sound buffering system that will be incorporated into the kennel space for review and approval by city staff. Number six, the existing drive-through under the building canopy must remain an inobstructed drive-through area for use of a covered drop-off area for building tenants. No fixtures or furniture may be placed in the drive-through area. Upon any change in ownership, the new business owners are subject to all conditions listed under the conditional use permit and shall notify the city of ownership change. Eight, the dog boarding kennel, including any common or play areas, may not expand beyond the subject tenant space, which is 205 West Ash in the initial application, but the applicant is also looking at 207 West Ash. So that's something that we'll want to talk about when we hear from the applicant, without any amendment of the ECP. The subject conditional use permit case number CU14-1 may be modified or revoked by the City Planning Commission, should it be determined that the dog boarding kennel or the conditions under which it was permitted are detrimental to the public health, welfare, and materially interest to properties or improvements in the vicinity, or if the use is maintained as to constitute a public nuisance. So those would be some of the conditions that staff would recommend. We also have a list of findings, if they are suitable to the commission. You can look at those. And I won't read through those right now. And I think we'll just entertain questions, if you have any.
Thank you for your report, Dustin. Hold questions until, unless you have one quickly with an applicant, but go ahead.
Yeah, real quick. The corner place used to be the restaurant. I see a kid going on in there. I'm curious as to what it's going to be in that location. Will it interfere with the solid park?
Okay, we'll ask the applicant when he's up there, or the tenant, or the building that's here. So would the applicant like to speak and address the commission? Name and address for the record, please.
Diane Erickson, 5353 West Watkins Road in Salina. And I am the applicant and the owner of Soggy Dog Salon. Hi. We've been here before. I have a strange sense of deja vu. First of all, your question, Mr. Story, regarding the business that's there now in the restaurant area. Our landlord is here. He can address that. But I can tell you that it will be the fifth restaurant-type business to go in there since the inception of the Plaza. Their intent is to be a restaurant, as far as I know, a bistro-type business. But as far as any of their other plans, I can't speak for them. But it is looking to be a restaurant, soon. Gosh. Since having met with you before, and just very recently, I was made aware that 207 West Ash is also available. And I discussed that at length with our landlord and reviewed with our consultant as to what we had proposed initially, and what we can do with this additional 1,000 square feet of space, approximately. The addition of 207 allows us greater flexibility in caring for our clients. It allows us to provide a much more, a better enhanced exercise area. It also allows space for an indoor park area. The park area, granted, is not as nice as some of our larger parks, but it can be made to function in a way that is beneficial to our clients, in that we would expand upon our peapod, if you will. And with the addition of the same floor surfaces, the drainage system that we have available to us in that area, we would be able to have the activity area and exercise space for both large and smaller clients, in addition to an area where they could be walked within the building. That does not negate the opportunity for taking them outside and taking them for walks. And if you spend much time in this area of an evening, you will see that the area around this building is quite the dog-walking park. So with the green space that we have, with our intent to continue what we have done in the past as far as caring for our clients, doing the pickup that is so critical, I see that by expanding into the next area to provide the exercise that the dogs need, to provide an indoor park area, it allows for greater security for our clients. We don't necessarily have to take them out as often, or certain dogs who aren't comfortable going out. We would provide a better location for them. So this, I realize this is an addition, but I think it is going to be a very positive thing, should you approve the application, for us to consider both areas. Traditionally, the building that we're in does not have the parking that you would hope for, for several different types of businesses. Our business of drop-off, pickup, and return suits, this building suits that need in that there is the drive-through. I was happy to hear that we had looked at the potential for outdoor dining in that area. I have not been in favor of that. First of all, because we would lose our, the primary reason I selected that spot is because of that drive-through and because of what we do. The other thing is that area is a catch-all because of the way the wind comes in. I wouldn't want to sit out there and eat a sandwich. It's pretty dirty. It blows a lot. We're constantly cleaning up from all the trash that blows in. And so I don't know that it would be a great dining experience. Also, that corner is a little tricky for traffic. Just in the last couple of weeks, we've seen accidents there. I've had a telephone pole come down quite close to our building. So safety, line of sight is still an issue, I think, as far as the drive-through. So continuing that as a drive-through seems to be a safer alternative. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Again, everything is pretty much the same as I brought to you several months ago. But we do have an opportunity now to expand into a seldom-used location. I think that with our design to build a wall that connects the two areas, we can then display artwork. We can put up our photography. We will have a little more security. It is not my intention to turn this into a puppy-in-the-window situation. I intend to, if allowed the opportunity, to put in a corridor that will not only help us moderate our climate inside, because the north windows do not afford as much insulation as I would like. An indoor corridor would allow us to use that simply as an area to get from one place to another, also offering us additional security to keep our puppies in place. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. And my consultant is also available for questions for more specific areas.
Thank you. Any questions for applicant?
Ms. Erickson, you're comfortable with all of staff's recommendations, including number eight, that allows your conditional use permit to be revoked if there become problems?
Absolutely. Absolutely. If it's bad enough that it's considered to be revoked, then we shouldn't be there.
Did I remember from the prior presentation that you aren't going to walk the dogs outside of the facility, that that was a safety, a security issue? You're going to keep them in the, inside the facility?
When we met the first time, walking the dogs outside was a very good alternative. We can do that. People are hired to do dog-walking all the time. We can do that. We will have the staff to do that. But the opportunity to have an indoor play area as well helps us with inclement weather. It helps us if we have dogs who have certain anxieties, if we have dogs who don't get walked. There are a lot of dogs out there that are pee pad-trained, and they don't want to walk. So this allows us to not only walk the dogs, but to give them an indoor area as well. And also the opportunity for socialization. So that's, that's pretty important, to be able to let the dogs play.
So I had a question in that regard. I'm not sure. Help me understand. So if I'm looking at this correctly, your 203 West Ash space, then you would also be using 207?
Yes.
Which is separated by one of those...
This is 203 here. This is 205. This is 207.
Right. So 203 and 207 are separated by 205.
That's correct.
And did I understand, you say you were going to build a wall to create a connection between those two? Or are you simply going to go outside?
The wall. Okay, I understand. The wall that's there will remain, that divides the two areas. You may need to train me in laser pointers. How hard can it be, huh? Thanks. Okay, what we are proposing is that initially, there is a doorway here that would connect our current location to our boarding. And this is where our kennels are, this particular picture. And that door would be here. On this initial drawing, we included these two areas for small and large pet activity. With the addition of 207, this small activity area would remain. We have enough room here that we could include a photography studio, which is what we have done in the past. All of our clients have their portraits taken. There would give us a little more room for that here. We could add our door here. There would be, then, this, this area here would contain a door. So if we could see this slide with both of them? That way, the door here would connect this area. This wall would be continuous, then, here, with the exception of that door that you saw here. By having this wall, we isolate the boarding area. We isolate the play area. And that wall then becomes an area that is more visibly pleasing for people who are driving along Ash Street here. It protects the dogs. It allows us an insulation barrier for these windows that are out here. And then we would have another doorway here. There are two existing, if you see this hastily drawn floor plan here. I need Mr. Mars. If you, if you look at that, you can see on the drawing that I provided you, that there are currently two office areas there. Those office areas would suffice very well as exercise rooms. And so we would be able to provide those dogs, those clients, with much more space, much more area to get the exercise that they need. So this would remain the same, with the exception now, because we do have 207, which would be located along here, that with the addition of a doorway here, we would be able to utilize this as the exercise area. So the wall I'm talking about would be this one here. Does that help, Mr.?
Just to clarify, this question that staff had was that you don't plan to use the exterior 205 or 207 entrances?
No.
You would have, everybody would go in and out through the existing Soggy Dog...
Exactly.
...canopy entrance.
Exactly. Yes, those, those would not be, they would be used as an emergency exit, but not as an entrance to the facility. We would still use the main entrance here, off of the canopy area.
So then, in our drawing that we have in front of us, the code footprint project data, that lists 203 West Ash, tenant space number two, 205 West Ash, tenant space number three, 207 West Ash is tenant space number four. So I think I have that understanding correct, Ms. Erickson, that you have a wall that essentially makes one front, then, of 203, over to 207 West Ash, correct?
Right.
So you have an indoor walkway between those two spaces?
Yes.
So my question is, what happens to 205 West Ash, tenant space number three?
I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Maybe I'm not understanding that. But does that remain just blank? Does it remain a rentable space, then?
You mean the very last one here?
No. I'm talking about the 203 West Ash, 205 West Ash, 205 West Ash, tenant space number three, the one in between yours?
Oh, right here.
And what happens to that?
That is the initial drawing that I came to you, this one. This is 205.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, that's where I'm not comprehending.
No, you're fine. Yeah, this was the initial project and, and drawing that I brought to you.
Thank you. Okay, that was my misunderstanding. Thank you.
So, so yes. And then 207, which recently became available and was not available at the time.
All right.
207 then would be transformed into the areas that we would no longer need.
Thank you for the clarification. Now, I understand that.
Sure.
That's what you have at your places here, is the, so we don't have a drawing that shows them both put together for you, but they're on separate.
My apologies for late arrival. I didn't see that material.
No, no.
Ever?
All of a sudden, I had this terrible question for staff. We've had a couple of instances where we've had to do these things completely over because we didn't get notification out. So if we put the other 20 feet of building on here, does that foul up notification of neighbors?
Not the way the notice was done. What we will tell you is the report that we wrote and the findings and recommendations we made was based on 205 only. So then it becomes a judgment for you whether those things still pertain if you increase the space. John, could you go... John, could you go to the slide that, that has the square footage breakdowns?
Okay.
One of the things we said was that here, here is how the building breaks down, and so the existing grooming operation is in 203, the initial expansion was 205, and then the potential expansion is 207. So, one of the things we noted in our findings was that the kennel operation would only occupy one-fifth of the building. If you expand it, it's going to occupy two, two-fifths of the building. If you could keep scrolling up, John. So, the initial expansion, 40% of this building's leasable area would be devoted to Soggy Dog. If you go to the expanded area, that would increase to 60% of the leasable area of this building would be devoted to Soggy Dog operations. It is a judgment call for you as to whether you think that, that changes or modifies any of those findings, but as to the notice, the, the, the area shown as the request area was the entire building, the entire parcel. And so, it doesn't change who would get notified because the, the request area was within 200 feet of the parcel owned by Mr. Ravencamp, not just the 203 area. So, we would not expand our notice area.
Any other questions for applicant? Hearing none, thank you so much. At this time, we would open up for a public hearing. Anybody who has any concerns or wants to voice their opinion on this matter, please come to the podium.
We need Ms. Michelle Cooper with Maher Cooper and Associates out of Emporia, Kansas, 1716 West 13th. One of the things I think that Diane and the team at Soggy Dog want to address is the potential that this space creates for the community and that this is a billions and billions of dollars' worth of industry. If you look back as far as 1999, the pet industry was a $22 billion industry, moving into 2012, well over $45, $46 billion. Salina basically with the amenities that they have now is a really underserved community in that respect, as far as the type of amenities that they can expand to here, and that they've been extremely proactive, that they've already had the state inspector for the Kansas Animal Agriculture Department in to visit about space design, usage of materials, things like that, and also consulting with Pure Zone as far as dealing with all of the different odor issues. This gives them the opportunity as well to expand into an increased retail sales business, which increased retail sales increases sales tax. They also do quite a bit of work with the Salina Animal Shelter as well, with quite a bit of donated services and with the additional space. That affords them the opportunity to even be a better community partner by helping subsidize city budget, by helping city animal shelter needs with things that they need as well. So, I guess we just kind of want to showcase some of the opportunities that exist for the community with the expanded space and the potential moving forward.
Great, thank you. Seeing nobody else, we'll move, oh, Jim, sorry.
Jim Ravencamp, 652 South Santa Fe. I am the building owner, and really, I, I just came up here to see if you had any questions. The only thing I would say is that there'll never be a, a outdoor restaurant underneath that canopy. It'll always be a drive-thru for that, for that building. Soggy Dog's been in there seven years and they obviously are my best tenant, and it's just practical to use it as a drive-thru and drop-off, and so it'll never, never, as long as I own the building, it'll never be used as an outdoor restaurant.
Is 209 occupied now?
Yeah, it is occupied. They, they just seem to be taking quite a while to get it open.
So, no, 20, but 209?
Oh, 209 is.
It is occupied.
Yeah. A screen printing business is in there, but they joined up with somebody else, and they just use it for stores now.
So, I guess my question is, Dean, if they're a tenor, going back to Abner's question, is if they originally thought that it was only going to go to, if I'd rented 209 and I'd heard that they were going to 205, now they're going to 207, does that make any difference for 209 to have notice of that, or, again, just trying to make sure?
The owners are the ones that get the notice. We went back and reread our, our letter of notification, and we, we said that the Soggy Dog grooming business was proposing to expand to add a kennel area, and it would be incumbent on any owner who was interested to either attend the public hearing or watch on cable access to be informed of that. But there, there's nothing in terms of the advertising or notice. Our main concern was that as we walked through, wrote our reports, crafted our conditions and findings, it was based on an expansion into 205 only, and so you would have to look at those findings and see if they still pertain. The, there's a couple of them that make specific reference to 203 and 205 only, so they would, they would need to be amended to include 207. And then, the other aspect deals with our statement that the, based on the size of the proposed boarding kennel tenant space in proportion to the remainder of the building, we said one-fifth of the space, it would, under this proposal, be two-fifths of the space. You would then have to see if you agree that even occupying those three spaces, that it would not dominate the surrounding area or generate business activities at a level that is incompatible with surrounding businesses due to the limitations on space. So, on any of these types of businesses or activities, the level of activity is kind of proportionate to the space, just as we discussed with the Montessori preschool, square footage allowed up to 24 students. The activity level may not necessarily be any different, but you would need to judge for yourself whether the impact of expanding into tenant space number four would be anything dramatically different than expanding just into space number three. But, that would be Mr. Ravencamp as the owner's judgment as to whether he thinks expanding into three out of the five tenant spaces would make it more difficult to rent out space five or tenant space one.
Okay, any other questions for Jim? Mr. Ravencamp?
Just a question. In many, I'm, I'm envisioning Main Street restaurants that I've seen?
Sure.
That have created a space with iron bars that are probably, hopefully not permeable by vehicles?
Right.
And imagining Hanity in 100-degree days, and with, and realizing, by the way, the vagaries of the restaurant business generally, that they tend to come and go, but I, I'm, I'm envisioning perhaps another, another owner, let's say in the distant future, who might want that there. I, I guess my question is that it might still be possible, even feasible, to accommodate that traffic if necessary.
You mean if, if, if there was a decision for an outdoor restaurant?
Yeah, if there was just a small space, a shaded space in the summer for a restaurant there.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, there again, as long as I own it, I wouldn't do it.
Right.
Because it, it's just so accessible, you know, to, for a drive-thru and all that, that I, that I wouldn't do it. And if, if somebody came along after these people moved out on 157 on the restaurant, which, like she said, there's been five of them in there now, I, I really don't want another restaurant in there. I'd rather have it put into an office space or whatever, so, and, and that would, so, I, I just never have, I, I designed it to where it would be a drop-off, in and out, you know, type of thing, basically for Soggy Dog, and, and like I said, she's my best tenant, and she'll continue to be that, so, but, anyway.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ravencamp.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
You're welcome. More on the public hearing? Anybody else like to respond? If not, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back for commission for action.
Is there any prospect that we could go ahead and make this for the entire building and then avoid any future discussions of, of expansion into 209 and into the restaurant space, should they come up?
I'm not sure that we would be presenting the same findings if that were the, the case.
Okay.
But as it, as it stands, you have findings of fact related to approval of conditional use permit at your places, and on the, the second page of those findings are two things that don't correspond to the presentation of Ms. Erickson about relating to the 207 space, and that is, at the very top, it says the proposed conditions of approval are intended to ensure that the boarding kennel activities at 203, 205 West Ash. So, that would need to be, you would have to agree that that, those same conditions would apply and ensure compatibility if 207 were included. And then the statement in the section four there that said that the proposed boarding kennel tenant space in proportion to the remainder of the building, it says it's one-fifth of the space. If you were to approve her expanded version into 207, it would actually be two-fifths of the space. So, those, those two findings would need to be modified if, if you want to incorporate these findings into any action that you took today.
Mr. Chairman, may I take a shot at a motion here?
I would love to hear it.
I would move that we approve this application, subject to the staff's recommendations, and accepting of the findings of fact related to the conditional use permit, but revised to include the additional space contemplated for the occupancy.
I'd like to add that I, I don't, I truly think she's got a great business, and I appreciate you being down there, you've done a great job, and everybody has, that's ever been there has, has approved it and talked highly of it. But when it comes to downtown area, I cannot believe that our downtown area needs a kennel. And it, it's just, just my opinion, whether it's right or wrong, I can't believe that our downtown area needs a kennel, a dog kennel, an indoor dog kennel where, you know, it just doesn't feel, it doesn't look right, feel right, I don't think it's a good business for a downtown. So, that's, I'll just state that opinion.
I'll second your motion.
Any other discussion? I have a first and a second, any other discussion?
Yes, I do, very quickly, I think that, I at least would be remiss if, didn't comment that this is directly across the street from us, that there is public space, which is indeed taxpayer county space here, and I would hope that dogs got walked on it. I'd like to see a mutt-mit dispensary put on these grounds, so that if dogs are walked there, they could be. In the same way as Commissioner Boxer says that areas are enriched by children's participation and presence, I would hope that these areas might be improved by pets, which are repeatedly supposed to be, at least it's understanding, as children. I have similar reservations about a dog kennel in downtown, but the expansion of space and a commitment to keeping the area clean, along with the stipulations in the, in the city, the provisions asked for, make me think that it's at least a worthwhile aspect, and if it does turn out to be injurious to the public health, then there's a procedure there for eliminating that use.
Well, I'd like to weigh in just a little bit more about why I'm supporting that. This is not an animal shelter. If you've been there, or if you've been to the one in Lincoln, Nebraska, that my children bring their pet to, these are not animal shelters. They don't smell like animal shelters, they don't sound like animal shelters, and the people who regulate those animal shelter, those areas more than anything else are the clients. My children would not bring their animal to a place twice that smelled like what some of you are afraid this will smell like. I don't want to sound elitist, but the people who bring their animals to be boarded at these places will not tolerate less than the very best facility. This is not like, well, Aunt Martha won't take Tippy tonight, and so we're going to drop them off at the boarding kennel. It's not the same business. Therefore, I think, and the figures for the economic impact are pretty astounding, so that's where I'm at.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign of pose?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We just wanted to make note that Ms. Erickson will have to have a license through the state of Kansas. She will have to have a license for commercial animal establishment through the city, and she would have a conditional use permit, any three of which could be revoked.
Perfect, thank you. Moving forward, action item?
Public hearing item number four, application SUP 14-1 filed by Megan Pickford on behalf of Call Valley Greenhouses requesting the approval of a special use permit for a season open-air market retail garden center. Dean?
Want to confirm, we do have a representative?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have a representative for Call Valley here. We are at the, the, we get mixed up in our directions, we are in the northeast corner of the parking lot for Southview Plaza, and we are at the southwest corner of Cloud and Ninth Street. We are catty corner from Stutzman's, which is on the northeast corner of Cloud and Ninth Street. And the applicant, Call Valley Greenhouses, has a lease with the Southview Plaza property. They're looking at leasing about 16,000 square feet in the corner of the parking lot. They want to have a seasonal market selling plants and produce March through June, so it would be a more limited window than what is across the street at, at Stutzman's. Because of the extended period, it does require a public hearing and a special use permit to be approved by the planning commission. They're looking at being open seven days a week, March 1st through June 30th. They would like to make no permanent physical changes to the site, but they are planning construction of a 20-by-40-foot shade structure and a 21-by-48-foot Quantic greenhouse. These structures would be temporary, they're not planning any use of anything on a permanent basis. They would get deliveries of their inventory from their main greenhouses in Manhattan, and historically, they have stacked plants on pallets and had kind of a protective area around the outside. Call Valley has previously set up at, at the Dillon Superstore and some other locations around, but it, on a shorter-term basis. We did want to make note that, starting in sometime after Memorial Day, the intersection of Cloud and Ninth Street is going to start to be torn up because there will be a, a widening of that intersection, and will change the alignment and travel lanes on both Cloud and Ninth Street. That could result in some closed driveways and realigned parking. There'll be an additional lane on Ninth Street added north of Cloud Street. So, that really won't start until June. The other thing that we have to think about, primarily as a staff, is, is you won't be reviewing that, but as we look at parking and, and just a short overlap period, but this has historically been a site for a, a fireworks stand as well. And so, if we have the, this located here, the fireworks stand has been a little farther south in this location, but there will have to be some coordination. If they're open till June 30th, we'll be setting up potentially a fireworks stand during that same period. The good news for parking is that there's a lot of empty space at Southview Plaza, so there's quite a bit of sur- there's quite a bit of surplus parking. This will displace parking, but will, will also have a parking need of its own, but we have determined there's a surplus running of about 102 spaces. So, they will have access to restrooms inside the Genesis Health Club, as that is the landlord for this property. The main question we have is just about how they would get water, to water their plants or keep them watered. The Stutzman's has its own, basically plumbing tap on a city main that provides water service for their location. There was some discussion here about tapping into the irrigation system for Genesis Health Club. So, we would like to receive a little bit of additional information about that, but we think that the use as proposed is compatible with this commercial corridor, and you've got obviously several options, which would be approve, approved subject to specified conditions, postponed consideration if you need additional information, or deny the application. We've recommended four conditions, and those are identified on pages six and seven of the report. And the other thing we wanted to point out, the way that this has worked in the past is that once you, as a planning commission, determine that the location and the plan is acceptable in the initial review, then if this works out well and they remain in compliance, they could set up again next year without having to come back to you, because you've determined that this to be an appropriate location. So our primary question would be to get clarification on how water would be provided to the site to keep the plants watered, and our recommendation would be, if you wish to approve this, to incorporate the four conditions on page six, and again, this would run March 1st through June 30th of this calendar year. We'd be open to any questions that you have.
Any questions for city staff? Hearing none, we'll hear from the applicant at this time. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Deborah Delsite, my address is 2297 Granite Road in Bennington. I am the retail operations manager, and I've been with the company for 14 and a half years, so I'm very familiar with how we run these things, because I spend my three months doing it. Water, to answer your question, the shaded, as you come in the south entrance there on South Ninth Street, you see the shaded second median there?
Yeah, this one right here.
Right, right, that one right there. There is, that's a raised median with grass, and there is a water hole there, and we have made arrangements with the landlord, part of our rent money is to pay for the water with their irrigation system. So we would just run a hose between there. We have special hoses that we use that go across traffic lanes. To give you an example of what they've done in the past, Kansas City, Missouri, we have a garden center in Price Chopper, and they have a car that goes across there at least every three minutes, and the hose lasts all year. In Lincoln, Nebraska, we have a garden center in a lumberyard, and of course, not only does car traffic go across there, but truck traffic does, and those hoses do not burst. We actually buy special hoses, we don't go to retail center and buy garden hoses, so you're not going to see water spraying up or, you know, leakage and stuff, because we do use special hoses to go across traffic lanes. As far as the time period, we do ask for March to the end of June, but I will let you know that that is to set up garden centers. We usually actually don't open the garden center until about the third week of March, and we are usually closed about the third week of June, so I think it'll actually be a little more compatible with the Fourth of July stand than you think, because we like to have everything gone by the end of June, so. Any other questions I can answer for you?
When Dean had mentioned pallets on there, do you, when he was, were you actually saying you just have stacks of pallets and everything sitting on that, or?
We set up cinder blocks with pallets on them, but then we cover them, we border it with bench tape, so you don't see the pallet, and then once the plants are on it, you see plants, you don't see pallets.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you. This is a public hearing, anybody have any questions or concerns on this, please approach the podium. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission, and hoping for discussion and/or ready to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move we approve this application with the staff recommendations and required findings.
I have a motion, looking for a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion before we take a vote? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign of pose? Hearing none, motion passes.
Interesting experiment.
Thank you all.
In retail business competition.
So we'll know where to go to look for plants this spring.
We don't have any special green space setback that you need to?
No. They are the green space. Are we going to widen the street before we get there?
Dean, do you have anything you want to add before we adjourn?
We will meet, hopefully at our regular time, weather permitting, on the 18th of February. We have, one item is a public hearing on a group home for children that is on Kerwin. It's a single-family residence and someone that wants to, basically an emergency shelter, or we're calling it a group care facility for children through SRS, and then we will have the 2014 capital improvements program will be reviewed by the planning commission for your review and comments. So those will be the two items on the 18th, and the first meeting in March, we'll be doing our annual review of the comprehensive plan, our self-checkup, so.
Great, this meeting is adjourned.